Hi, good morning. We're about to begin our Community Development Agency Special Meeting Agenda for April 25th, 2019. It was to begin at 9:30. It's 9:40. If we could start by standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we're going to start the meeting from down here, Dawn, do you want to come up?
Oh, I have the resolution.
Good morning, Dawn.
Good morning. All right. So before we call the resolution, I'll just ask if anybody from the community would like to come up and comment on the proposed resolutions?
Good morning. Angela DeVito from South Jamesport. I'm not sure how we got to this resolution in terms of the particular choice, but I have some comments as well as some questions. One, I'd like to know if our town attorney's office, subsequent to your town vote to get new eyes on the issue, prepared any information on contract litigators that may be available to you as a board to consider, reviewing, going pros and cons on them. I say this and ask this question because I do view that as a function of the town attorney's office, and I don't know, has that been done? Has that been shared with the town board? Are you curious as to why not?
The town board, the town attorney did supply. Would you like to address this?
I was given the three separate firms to look at. I have-
By whom? Who were you given three separate firms to look at by? By me.
By the supervisor. And I'm not sure how far to go because I really think that maybe one of the things I was going to suggest, because I see where this is kind of going, and I kind of felt the same way, is that maybe it may make sense to table this and have a choice of attorneys submitted, have a vetting process done, although it's got to be done very quickly. I know there's some immediacy issues here to go through the questions of, you know, their commercial background, contract background, litigation background, municipal work. Also, there has to be a conflict review done to make sure that they do not have any conflict from prior representation of anybody. So I was going to suggest that.
I would like to comment on that. I think that that's something that on the part of the town attorney's office should be initiated. You should not have town board members, okay, with various ideological standpoints, making submissions of who they think, okay? The thing is that that should have been initiated right after that town board vote by your office without any instruction from either the town supervisor or any council member. It is unconscionable that we're at this point where we need to proceed in such a manner. I think that my suggestion is that, because we do need a contract lawyer, that we need to put aside being ideologues, and you need to govern. You need to pick up the mantle and understand what governance is all about. I understood comments in the paper about simply because the town supervisor made a suggestion for counsel, people were not going to vote on it because they were not vetted in it. That is an ideological standpoint. It has nothing to do with good governance, because in the time between this resolution being posted and now, all of you have had an opportunity, all you have to do is Google. I Googled this firm and saw that they are very, very weak on contract litigation, okay? All of you could have done that, rather than making a public statement that you're not going to vote simply because the town supervisor didn't invite you in, have tea, and consult with you on this. That is not how you govern. You govern from a responsible standpoint. I am extremely disappointed, extremely disappointed that we find ourselves at this point here. I'm disappointed in the town attorney's office for not taking the initiative. It should not be a reactive office. It should be one that's here at this point representing us in the town of Riverhead. I urge you to initiate and direct the town attorney's office to do a search, a search off of Long Island, outside of Metropolitan New York, and do not become concerned over the costs. You are going to see firms who can provide us with this service for the scope of activity that needs to be done do not work for $400 an hour. They don't work for $160 an hour. They work for huge amounts of money. But I think at this point, for the people of Riverhead, for going forward with how we're going to dispose of this great asset we have, it's time to just put aside your ideologies and do the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Kathy McGraw. I'm from up on the sound in Jamesport. I'd like to first thank you for adopting the resolution to get outside counsel. I think it's a very good idea. I totally agree with Angela's comments. I'm curious to know, this isn't the first time outside counsel has been obtained. Is there a process in place for how Riverhead gets outside counsel? How did the counsel on the CAT contract come about?
What we did was we researched attorneys, spoke to the town attorney's office, researched attorneys. We put together a list. We narrowed it down to a couple. We did an interview in executive session with the board. We voted on it, and that's how we determined who we were going to hire. That was not done in this situation. We were presented with a resolution that it was going to be this law firm. I never heard of them before. There was no discussion with any member on the board, to my knowledge, about this law firm or any other law firm. I saw a resolution that came to me that said this is who we were going to vote on. That's just wrong. The board has to have input in this.
Thank you, and I agree that the town attorney should be running this operation. I just think that the past track record of the town of Riverhead has been kind of, oh, sometimes we'll ask, sometimes we'll just all agree, we'll get this person. There needs to be a process in place, and I would urge that that be done. But I do want to thank you because I think that it's really important to get good outside counsel on dealing with the debacle that has become the sale of Epcal. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do deliberate on who we're going to use, and when the town attorney comes into executive session, we have discussions as to who and why.
For example, on the last, on getting the money back from Luminati, seeking that, was there a process? Did you use a process?
Absolutely.
Or do you just kind of haphazardly get together? Was the town attorney involved?
Absolutely.
Do you have any written guidelines on how to obtain outside counsel?
No, there is no one particular way that it's done. I think the suggestion you were putting forward is very good. I think in the past, they have done it both ways, where they had said, like Tim had said, where there's a couple attorneys, they come in, they're interviewed, and the attorney's chosen that way. There's another way that the town attorney vets the attorneys and then recommends who to go with. I did give the town attorney three names to take a look at, so, but I can see that I think that this is a way that the town attorney, if they are comfortable researching, the firms to suggest?
I'm going to be very honest. I spoke to all three firms, but I mean, if the town board, and again, I'm not sure I agree fully that it's the town attorney's call on this, so let me just say that. But I mean, because I think it's a town board vote, they're the policymakers and the decision makers. The attorneys who were provided to me as contacts all have extremely high ratings. I mean, I don't know why we're saying that this particular firm does not have any commercial litigation experience because they do. In fact, I spoke with the individual involved and got some of those cases, but be that as it may, I have no problem with vetting them. I mean, again, you know, these attorneys who have been selected as, you know, New York Metro Super lawyers, I mean, I think, you know, they've achieved that A.D. Martindale-Hubble review. I'm not sure why we're, you know, shooting bullets at them, but again, I have no problem with a more structured vetting process if that's what will make this work.
I would just recommend that something be put in place in writing, if possible, on the process for obtaining outside counsel for the town of Riverhead, rather than kind of haphazardly sitting around and saying, well, here are some, and it's happened different ways, different times.
I take issue with the use of the word haphazard, so, right off the outset.
There's a lot of partisan feeling on this board, and I think the more processes you have in place for handling these kinds of matters would benefit the town, and I just urge that you come up with some process, and in this case, again, thank you for at least getting outside counsel.
So I have no problem with this. How would the board like to proceed with moving this forward to get outside counsel?
You have no problem with this, with voting on this?
I have no problem with having the discussion, how we would like, I do not mind tabling this. I think that it's prudent to table this. I think that to obtain outside counsel that everybody is comfortable with, I think is a good idea. I would like to get suggestions from you, how you would like to do it.
Well, I think I can, I'm just going to say a few things. I'm not going to support getting any outside counsel, and I'll tell you why. We had a board approve the contract. We went through a year-long process of a Q and E where the board approved CAT. At no time, to my knowledge, was Preston or Luminati even a serious player in that negotiation. His financials were not used for us to find Q and E. It was strictly CAT that we were looking at. Now I read in Long Island Business News that CAT, although they don't have to, are willing to go ahead and pay the alarm fees and runway fees to Luminati, but that's a whole separate issue from what we're talking about. That has absolutely nothing to do with outside counsel. I remember very distinctly the whole ethics board with Jody and how that was really weaponized. And that, remember very distinctly that Tim at a meeting said, "We're waiting to hear from the ethics committee before we make a vote. We're ready to move forward. We're just waiting for a decision from the ethics committees." We got the decision. We voted, found them qualified and eligible. Now, what's changed between that, and I know that CAT's up there and they're doing their due diligence as well as we are, so I don't know what's changed between finding them Q and E, paying for their extension. What's changed between then and now, except Preston, who was never a real player, and we know that he was never a real player. I have a feeling that all of this is going to lead to litigation. There's no doubt in my mind it's going to lead to litigation, and that's going to stall another three years. I'm looking at the end game. I'm looking at the next generation, which is coming up very quickly. I'm looking at all the positives. Now, believe me, I'd like to meet with CAT. Now, I know you met with them last week. I didn't want to meet with them. I mean, I did want to meet-
I didn't meet with CAT. I didn't meet with Daniel Preston.
No, 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 forget Daniel Preston. Daniel Preston is not CAT.
He's a purchaser in the contract.
He's not. He was not a real deal, and you know it, but the bottom line is, I know you met with some of the people last week. I wanted to, but I didn't because I was afraid that, all right, we're going to start the whole ethics thing again, and we're going to weaponize that particular thing to stall yet again. We're on the verge, in my humble opinion, of something great. I think we're on the verge of something positive, something generational that's going to happen up at Epcal. If it falls on its face, it's going to be because of their doing, not because of our doing. So I don't know why we're even looking at this special counsel to look at a contract. I don't understand it. I don't, and I'm not going to support it, and that's all I'll say about that.
All right. Jim, I somewhat agree with what you're saying. I am in favor of hiring outside counsel, but if we need it, because right now, today, I don't know that we need it because I haven't heard from CAT. This board needs to hear from CAT. Not an individual having a private meeting, but this board in a public venue needs to hear from CAT. They need to come in here for a work session and tell us what is going on, how are they handling the situation with Daniel Preston. If Daniel Preston drops out of it, to me, and I'm not an attorney, if he drops out of that contract, that contract in my mind isn't necessarily legit. That's where we're going to need outside counsel. At this point in time, we don't know that because we haven't heard from CAT. I wish you would share with us what you learned from your meeting, but I have-
Sure, I was there, and Bob was there also.
I have no idea. I also was invited, and I also turned it down because of all the looks that it was a bad or illegal meeting when we met with them originally back on the blizzard day, which it absolutely was not illegal, but people construed it that way and wanted to portray it that way. Shame on them. And because of that, I did not meet with them last week when I really wanted to, but they need to come in here and talk to us publicly.
Well, that's what we did have a conversation about, because I think they should come in here and meet with us in a work session, and I think it is disturbing all of the issues that have been raised in the local paper and in Riverhead local with what's going on with Daniel Preston, his default on a $10 million loan, which was part of his expertise when he came in. He did submit financials, financials from Daniel Preston were submitted as part of the Qualified Eligible Triple Five, did reference Luminati as having expertise in the aviation field and being able to attract other businesses to the development for Calverton Aviation and Technology. Luminati is certainly prominent in the intended development plan, which is part of the contract for this deal. I don't disagree with you on some things, but saying that not having an outside attorney to look at the contract, to give us legal advice on where we stand at that, I think is imperative for the town to be able to protect the town of Riverhead in this deal. I do not disagree that Calverton Aviation and Technology is there doing their due diligence, is continuing to do their second part of the due diligence. I am looking forward to what they will present, and hopefully it will be what it is that they presented in the Qualified and Eligible. We do not know that yet, but I am hopeful that will be. We have asked them to come to a work session. That was part of what the meeting was about. They said that they would prefer to wait till after their due diligence, their second due diligence on the 20th of May before presenting before the board.
See, that doesn't help us.
But that's fine. Can go back and ask them again. This is what they had requested.
My only other concern, and-
And that, you know, that's up to them.
And I'm being respectful. My only other concern is, this contract, I believe, in fact, I know, was partially written or mostly written by Frank Eisler. Nobody knows this contract better than Frank Eisler. Frank Eisler's a very respected attorney in town, and not only that, but we had some questions about him, which I felt was ill-founded, but in any event, we hired Helen, a second attorney to shadow him and to really help us through that whole process. So if you want to know anything about this contract, whether it's in, out, what's good, what's bad, what can, I don't know why we just don't go to somebody that's already on retainer, that's that we're already paying somebody. I have a hard time spending, spent almost a million dollars already of taxpayers' money to get to this point, and to go ahead and hire another firm when I think we have the talent already, not only in play, but very familiar with what's going on, so that's-
I'm going to jump in. I want to be able to discuss this, but unfortunately, I have to break the flow of conversation because I had an ethics board pending on this. I want to make disclosure so that I can join in this discussion. I'm just going to read a statement. "In late February, I requested an opinion from the ethics board regarding my participation, comment, and vote on applications wherein my former spouse, Chris Kent, represents the applicant. I express my desire to represent the community and be confident that there is not a conflict in participating in discussion or votes on applications wherein he is acting as counsel for the applicant. I have provided the ethics board with a full disclosure of my relationship and requested the ethics board to fully investigate and render an opinion. To date, I have not received a decision or recommendation from the ethics board. However, I spoke with Eric Howard and Donna Bernard, and they gave me some information and anticipated determination that I am expected to make a disclosure each time one of Mr. Kent's projects or clients is being discussed. Only one disclosure per project. That said, after sending a confirmation email to Mr. Howard to make certain that I was following his and the ethics board recommendations, I want to make a disclosure to the public and my fellow board members. My ex-husband, Christopher Kent, is an attorney who represents clients before the town board, planning board, and departments. The divorce settlement was finalized and entered by the courts on December 20th, 2012, and our divorce is final as of 2013. The final divorce decree judgment was entered into court on September 10th, 2013. Child support payments ended on December 2014, and maintenance payments ceased on June 1st, 2016. Mr. Kent represents Triple Five in the purchase of Epcal. I do not have any business dealings, and I do not stand to gain or benefit financially from decisions made in reference with his client in any way." Now, with that being said, certainly it is very important to me that we get outside counsel on this issue. I mean, this has been a concern from the beginning. There are just too many variables and concerns in this whole issue, and I do have to wonder if a proper vetting process was done from the very beginning, since this is a huge land transaction in our town. And that's all that I want to say at this moment. Oh, and, you know, I certainly don't want to see anything become partisan, and for me, it is absolutely ridiculous that our issues would be partisan issues. We're a town. This is not the national level. Any issues that we discuss are not partisan issues. We should all be working together, and I don't have a problem with working together and choosing an outside attorney that everyone is satisfied with and having, you know, the town attorney's office properly vet the attorneys, outside attorneys that we use.
I can appreciate all that, and I can tell you right now, I've worked, as the longest sitting councilman here, I've worked under many different administrations. I've seen Riverhead struggle with this property for 12 years, and I was very familiar with it prior to even taking office. So it's, I don't think it's partisan at all. I think it's a vision. I think it's, people have different opinions of what that property is best used for. I read about what, why the federal government gave to us, about economic engine. That's really what it's all about for me. It's about the next generation. It's about jobs. It's about tax base. It's about all those things, and of course, the $40 million isn't a bad thing to have in the bank either, but that's what it means to me, and I just, I look at Epcal, and I see a tract of land in Calverton. It's secluded. It's, for the most part, private, and as a developer, talking with different developers, it's not that enticing, to be honest with you. It's location, where it is, it's not, the runways are there, which are a good thing, but I mean, the bottom line is, for interstate transit, it's really kind of out of the way. So there's a certain appeal, which is why we hired a marketing firm, to go ahead and try to market this property. I just think it's, for us as a town, to move forward, I think it really has to be left in oversight by the town, but really in private hands to handle the development of this property.
First, let me say, since I came into office, I see a lot of issues politicized, and that is seriously, that is a ball and chain on Riverhead.
Well, that's your doing, not mine.
That, absolutely.
It was never that way before to me.
I have no interest in that. I would like, I never started. I would like to all work together, but I don't think 12 years is a long time. I don't think 12 years is a long time to get it right. This is a huge transaction for the town. We need to do it right.
And I don't think anybody is, I think everybody's in agreement that they want this to be an economic generator for our town. I think everybody wants to see this property developed properly for the community, and part of that is making sure that the contract for the sale of the property is in the best interest of the town. I think that's the reason for taking a look at this contract. We know that one of the principals in this contract, one of the principal purchasers in this contract, has had incredible financial troubles since the Q and E. They're in default of loans. They're not paying their rent over there. They are in litigation about certain things. So to me, that is of concern in this contract.
So why are we reaching out to the author of the contract?
Exactly. And did you have those discussions with Triple Five when you had a meeting with them in the office, that you're concerned about Luminati's history of paying and his property being seized?
Of course. I mean, it's in the newspapers. They've read about it. They've-
Okay, but what I'm saying is, what else was discussed?
I'm not asking them for an answer. I'm just saying that that's a concern for us. I'm not asking them to explain it.
I mean, you said you discussed it with them. What did they know?
No, I just said that this was a concern with Luminati in the contract because they, we know that they're in default of a $10 million loan with Excel. They've just been, they were being evicted from their other property over there. They haven't paid property taxes, and I just stated the case. I wasn't asking for any feedback.
Did they respond?
They did not respond one way or the other. So I point, you know, it was just, these are areas of concern. It wasn't, you know, this wasn't, it was just an introduction, Amy.
I just wish they had responded to that, because that's, to me, that's the elephant in the room.
Right, but I think they can come before the board. They can come before the board and answer that. I've asked them to come for a work session. You know, they've said that they'd like to wait till the end of their due diligence period, which is in another four weeks to come before the board. You know, I mean, can you reach back out to them?
I would like our lawyer to reach out to their lawyer, saying that us hiring outside counsel to review the contract is pending their responses to the current climate that Luminati has created in Riverhead and Preston has created, and we, I would formally invite them, by the town board, to come to a public work session and share with you what the discussion was that they had with you, because I tell you, I'm very bothered that on a Thursday night, before Good Friday, this last Thursday, before Good Friday, when I'm at a private venue, and I'm being sought out by the outside counsel, asking me to have a private meeting with them on Good Friday at a hotel, and I said, "That's preposterous. You think I'm going to do that again?" But he also-
Why would that have anything to do with me?
But he also, because it was after your meeting.
But why would that have anything to do with me, Jody? It has absolutely nothing to do with me. I did not meet with their counsel. I did not speak to their counsel, so that has absolutely nothing to do with me, so I'm not really sure what you're trying to-
You did have a private meeting with them that we don't know what was discussed. Did you take notes?
I just told you. I had Bob, Bob Kozakovich is there, and he has notes. If you would like him to share the notes with you, he may.
Yes, and then-
Once he gets trying to make an issue where there's not an issue, let's work together on this.
Okay, and then also, talk about politicizing.
Do you all stop picking on each other, this garbage? This is absolute garbage. I'm sorry.
Angela, Angela, thank you, but-
It is. It is, so-
Sounds like a school board meeting.
Triple Five, Triple Five should come in for a public work session. They should be formally invited by our outside counsel from the entire town board.
That's what I request.
In a letter.
Very simple.
Ask them to come in.
Complete common sense. We need to hear from them before we proceed forward with outside counsel. I'm all in favor of going with outside counsel and getting somebody completely unrelated to the town of Riverhead, to County of Suffolk, and in care of the state of New York. We need to get somebody in here that is completely neutral, that has no idea what's going on, and can look at this objectively.
I think we should move forward with outside counsel, but that being said, I will send off the letter. In the interest of cooperation, we'll see what their response is, but in the meantime, I think there has been a question on the table as far as vetting. If we do go with outside counsel, how would we like to move forward with that? Would we like to request the town attorney to review and vet for us firms so that we can then interview for those firms, or are we looking to have town board members make suggestions to the town attorney for vetting?
Yeah, I think that they, that the town attorney should provide a list of competent attorneys that deal specifically in contractual litigation, that are unaffiliated with Suffolk County, Nassau County, and any projects or, you know- County, Nassau County, and any projects or, you know, that are currently ongoing on Long Island. I think that we should also be asking these attorneys to come in and share their experience with us and giving us their resumes and their profiles.
Well, that would be interviewing after the vetting, that's what I suggested. My only question is, if you eliminate everybody on Nassau Suffolk County, or do we want to just eliminate somebody? Because, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but having some municipal background would be a benefit in this situation, or no?
I don't want anybody with any political ties.
I'm just asking a question to Bob, that's all.
I could finish. I don't want anybody with political ties.
I understand that, Jody, but can we let Bob finish answering this question, then you can speak?
I'm not sure if you, how you get to the point where nobody has any political ties to anybody, first and foremost.
If you go in Manhattan, you will.
Because, because they're, I'm sure they all contribute to different parties at different times. Further you get away from Suffolk in this area, the less I'm going to be able to verify certain information perhaps, because they may not be known to me. The, the firms that I vetted or talked to have no connection with the Town of Riverhead, they are not part of the process, they have A V rating, they're super lawyers, but I'm not saying that you have to go with any of them. I, 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 I'm, I'm, I just don't know where it ends, because once I do the vetting, then the question is, how did he vet and what procedure did he use? How many attorneys did he speak to? Where does it end? I, I mean, that's, that's...
It's already gone too far.
You know, that's, that's the concern I have, I don't think this ever will cease. But I am more than willing to speak to counsel and bring names back to you, firms back to you, if that's what this board desires.
It will cease because it has to. We are a board and we have to make a decision.
I hope so.
We have to investigate, we have to research, and we have to use everything that we can. Part of that certainly being the Town Attorney's Office. We would ask you to help us with this situation, we'd ask you to help us find somebody that is capable to handle this in a professional matter, somebody that specifically works in contract litigation, that that's their mainframe. You don't go to a cardiologist for a broken ankle.
I'm trying to understand what that means.
Okay, they're all qualified in what they do.
That's their only thing they do?
That, that's their main forte, that's their main work. And attorneys are, work like that all the time. You have those, they, everybody does a little bit of everything, but some people have specifics that they're...
Has anyone reached out to Frank Isler or Wal? During this whole mishmash?
Yes.
And?
I just spoke to him about the complexity of what was going on, and if we should use outside counsel, what did he think? And he said he was fine with that, for a review.
So, Bob, you're going to look for, you're going to look for some attorneys that, and you may even also consider these other attorneys whose names were brought to you, because you felt strongly that they were, you know, that they were good lawyers for this situation.
They're, they're, they're people who I know of. In one particular case, I did have a, you know, matter with one of the attorneys. They have done transactional work, they've done contract work, they've done litigation work, they've done municipal work. I, I, I'm, I'm in a quandary, because I'm really trying to clarify the, the boundaries here in the qualifications. You know, I, I would suggest that the three that I've talked to would meet the qualifications, and I know that people will dispute that. So, you know, that, and, and, and there is, therein lies the problem. But I mean, if, uh, contract litigation...
Well, that's, that's part of this, nobody does just that.
Well, when you litigate, a lot of times it's disputes of contracts, so is that what we're talking about? You know, or, or are we talking about commercial litigation? Are we talking about, you know, something more involved? I guess, you know, I'm trying to understand, you know, because this is not a straightforward contract, there's a lot of legal issues that are involved, you got the Q and E issues, you got a lot of other things that I'm sure counsel will want to try to, you know, get their hands around, he or she, as the case might be, so...
So, maybe you can take from the three firms that you were given, you can look at them again and see if you want to keep them in the, the mix and perhaps add a few other firms, and then we can discuss it, the group can discuss it. And then we can make a decision.
I mean, if I'm hearing nobody in New York, I guess then what we're gonna have to do is, is, is look for attorneys outside of the New York area.
Yeah, not necessarily. Don't eliminate New York.
All right.
No, I think it's...
But do eliminate Suffolk County at least.
So, never having done any litigation in Suffolk County?
No, located in Suffolk County, not litigating in Suffolk County. That you don't want firms who are located within the county, is that, is that the issue?
Correct.
So, does that sound, that sounds reasonable for everybody, I think.
Is the board okay with that, charging Bob with doing that? I know, you'd, yeah.
I'm not spending another taxpayer dollar on any of this news figure.
Jody?
I'd really like Triple Five to come in, or Cat to come in and talk to us about it first and let us know what their intentions are.
I will.
Before we hire outside counsel, because if they're full steam rolling ahead, then I don't see in wasting any more taxpayer money on outside counsel either at this point. But I want to know what their position is and what it is that they're working on and what their intentions are, whether or not they're planning on extending the due diligence period, or they think they're gonna be...
There's no extension past the twentieth of May.
Or May twentieth, if they're gonna say, "Okay, we're gonna go forward with it, and then we're gonna end up in litigation, because they're trying to get out of the contract, because we can't produce a filed map." I want to know all of these things. I would like Frank Isler and Cat to come in.
Well, just, just for clarity, there, as per the contract, they had, they could only do one extension. So, on May twentieth, they need to say whether they're moving forward with the sale or not. So, that's, that's the end date of that, they cannot extend it any further from that.
Or we get a little bit richer.
And then, um, the other thing at, at, is for the subdivision that is in front of the Planning Board to move forward, I forget if it's from the twentieth, whether they have, do you know, Bob, from the twentieth, do we have three hundred sixty-five days, or is it from the initial contract signing? I think it's from the, from the May twentieth date, we have one...
I think it's from when they declare, you know, back on the due diligence.
That they're moving, right, and then we have the, that to move forward with the subdivision map.
Right, so we have three hundred and sixty-five days to deal with the New York State D E C, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, the Planning Department, Planning Board, I don't see that as being a big hurdle, but I do see the New York State D E C, and I do see the, um, Health Department being the big issue.
Well, they've already met with, they've already met with D E C, they've met with Health Department, seems, things seem to be more to the long...
So, those are the things that they told you when you met with them?
No, that's what I've heard from our staff, because it's our staff that's moving, we're the ones moving the subdivision forward. Triple Cat is not moving the subdivision, it is our responsibility to get the subdivision map approved, and that is in, in our court, and that is being, that, that, that's not through Cat, that's not through Cat.
The Health Department doesn't care about lines on a map, they care about what the proposed development plan is, what the sewer upgrades are gonna be, where you're gonna get the water from.
But there's no pro, there's no pro, proposed development plan, because until we sell the property, there is no site plan application. The only thing that you're getting approved is the actual subdivision map. There's no site plan, there's no development proposed, there's no nothing for that, for the D E C and the Health Department. And I can have the Town Board, they, the, have everybody come in, we did give an update on that a couple of weeks ago. If you'd like another update, I can have the team from here come back in and update you again on where we are, if you like, I could do that at one of the next work sessions.
I, I think that...
First and foremost, I want to hear from Cat, what Daniel Preston's role is.
Me too. I mean, did they give you any indication as to whether or not they're going forward with the sale?
They have till the twentieth, they're, they're...
So, they didn't indicate either way?
I did not ask them for an answer one way or, or another, whether they were moving forward, they have till the twentieth, they didn't indicate that they wanted to close, you know, before the twentieth, so they have till the twentieth to make their decision.
Well, what was the, when you met, what was your purpose that you had in mind that day?
They, I haven't met Amy, the one who took over for Stuart Beanstock before. So, he came in, also asked them about the work session, about coming to the work session, how they were moving along in the due diligence period, asked if they would come to a work session. They, they said that they would prefer to wait till after they decide whether they're gonna close and finish the due diligence to have a work session.
I thought, I think we had met Amy, wasn't Amy here in the beginning?
Yes, she was at the public hearings also, she actually gave testimony.
She has something to do with the American Dream.
American Dream, yeah, that's a question.
And she, prior to that, I think she worked for M T A or Jersey Rail, or it was...
She worked with Governor Christie, too.
Yeah, yeah, she was involved in something with that prior, but we did need her.
But her role's changed.
Right.
I, I mean, I definitely think at this point, we need to have outside counsel, I think we need to have the confidence that we're moving forward in a correct way and that this is in the best interest of the town. And I think the people who live in Riverhead need to have the confidence that this is in the best interest of the town, so...
I agree, I just want to make sure, I, I want to know first from, from Cat, what Daniel Preston's role is. Has that changed since things have been uncovered?
And I just, just to that, to that point, I don't disagree with you on that, but just to that point, Daniel Preston's role is what was stated in the Q and E and what's in the contract. So, that, that can't, that doesn't change.
We don't know that that hasn't changed in terms of Cat.
But, but that's a legal question.
Right, that's...
So, that's where I'm saying where the outside attorney comes in.
Right.
So, um, so my question is, I will reach out to them, ask them if they'll request for them to come to a public work session as soon as possible. In the meantime, do we want to charge Bob with vetting several, several attorneys?
Yes, have them start the process.
All right, so...
And I don't want you to reach out to them, because you already did that, you already asked them to come, and you said they declined, that they're not coming. I would like a formal letter from the Town Attorney's Office or from our outside counsel, Frank Isler, saying that the Town Board would like them to come in to...
Yes, Jody, would like a formal request.
You just said, "I'll ask them," so just maybe here.
I think, I think we all are basically on the same page, and we had a little discourse on this, obviously, this is a challenge, this is an, you know, a stressful issue for everyone, but I think we can work together. I think we, we have a basic plan here. We'll speak with Cat, Bob's gonna vet, um, and he's gonna still consider the attorneys that were brought to them, because you were stating that they were, you thought they were good, and then we'll move forward.
Two of them, two of them may take a...
We'll move forward from there, hopefully not delaying everything too long. We're all on the same page now, right? Every, wait, except for Jim.
Nope, nope, but that's okay.
Okay, so can I have a first and second to table this resolution? What number is this one?
Eight.
Eight.
You haven't even introduced it.
Oh, that's right, we just have public comment, sorry. So, but because we had it on the work session, do we have?
We have a special town board meeting.
We have, we have to table it, right?
We have to do something, right.
I didn't, I don't think I signed the...
No, he didn't have anything.
Special town board meeting, we don't have to...
No, because if it's less, if it's seventy...
If it's more than seventy-two hours greater.
Yeah, but you didn't introduce a resolution, how are you gonna table it? You gotta introduce it to...
Well, because it's introduced as part of the agenda, same as a regular town board meeting.
I would just withdraw it and start from scratch.
That you could do, we could, well, let's just...
All right, so Catherine, you call it.
Would you just withdraw it, right?
Yes, you could do that.
Do you want me to read this?
Yes.
Authorizes retention of the law firm of Stag, Terenzi, Confusion, and Wasnick LLP as special counsel, so moved.
No, can I have a first and second to withdraw?
First and second to withdraw.
Is that, that's correct, right?
Mm-hmm, attorneys.
She, she, you moved to withdraw.
I think you gotta move to...
Yes.
I will second to withdraw.
Wait, what do you have to do, Bob?
Probably should have moved the resolution first and second, and then a further motion to withdraw.
Withdraw, okay.
But it's...
All right, so do that, so then, Cat?
We're getting so involved, embroiled in the procedures, I'm, I'm...
All right, Catherine, call the resolution.
If anybody's gonna complain, let's move it.
Call it as I started to.
And then you, and then you called to withdraw.
Okay. Authorizes retention of the law firm of Stag, Terenzi, Confusion, and Wasnick LLP as special counsel, so moved.
Second.
And then, and then Catherine calls to withdraw it?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then you just called to withdraw the resolution, submitted.
Further motion to withdraw.
I make a motion to withdraw the resolution that was just, that was submitted, so moved.
I'll second to withdraw.
Moved and seconded vote, please.
Kent?
Did you vote on the withdrawal?
We didn't vote on the first one.
Yes, you gotta vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Kent?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Guglio?
Yes, to withdraw.
Yes, yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion is withdrawn.
Dawn, I want to thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you, it was lovely, she was being a good listener, she was lovely.
And did, I just opened it up for comment before we adjourn, if anybody wanted to comment.
Kathy McGrogan, I'm just curious to know what it is you think you're gonna hear from Cat that's going to sway you. I, I think it's pretty clear Cat is going forward. What organization would pick up the bills of Mr. Preston if they did not want to become an entity in Riverhead? I mean, they're not doing this out of the goodness of their heart.
My point exactly.
I need to hear it from them.
My point exactly.
In a public venue for the public record.
And do you want to know what their plans are for Epcal? I mean, clearly, they no longer have Daniel Preston, he's gone. He's in New York, upper state New York, nothing he has here is, I mean, there's no, he has no suggestions, he's not gonna be here.
Do you know that he's part of Cat or not part of Cat anymore?
Clearly, he is, we haven't seen anything, he's a twenty...
Clearly, I don't know that, because of what has happened.
And if he is not...
So, clearly, I need verification on that before I can make a decision as to what I want to do.
If he is no longer a part of Cat, are you fine with Cat?
No, I am not. That's the purpose of this whole thing that we're doing.
So, if they are...
Because that changes in my mind the contract.
So, the, the letter of intent was with Luminati.
Correct.
And the whole thing has turned on this aerospace industry and using Mr. Preston. If, if Cat comes in here and says, "We are buying out Mr. Preston, because clearly he's gone," then you're saying you would not, that, that is a, a, really, an, a, a game changer for you with respect to the Cat contract.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Cover first and second to adjourn, and we...
I just moved it, moved to adjourn.
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, opposed, so carried?
I need a cigarette or a drink.
Preferably both.
All right, we will move on to work session. First, I just wanted to do a couple of announcement, that we, the Town Board will be hosting a community forum on the proposed changes to the concession stand and sale of alcohol at South Jamesport Peach. The purpose of the forum will be to gather valuable feedback from residents on the proposal. Residents who are interested in expressing their thoughts on the changes should come to the senior center at Sixty Satrie Lane in Aquabog on Tuesday, April thirtieth at six thirty P.M.
Can I comment, can I comment?
Yeah. You want me to wait?
Sure, you want me to wait till the end?
Um, let me just do the announcement and then you can.
Okay.
Um, also, uh, Jim, if you wanna comment on this about your cleanup coming up.
Oh, yes.
Um, next, it's the Wading River Chamber of Commerce will be holding an Earth Day cleanup on April twenty-eighth at nine A.M. Uh, the group will meet at the shops at Eastwin and they will disperse from there. Uh, you can call six three one eight eight six twenty-eight hundred with any questions. Um, the business advisory committee is seeking applicants. Uh, the ideal candidate will have a strong interest in promoting business, knowledge of the town code, experience running a business, and a strong passion for improving our community. Uh, Riverhead residents eighteen and older. Uh, you can, uh, interested applicants should submit their cover letter and resume to, uh, Town Clerk at townofriverheadny.gov uh, by May sixth, two thousand nineteen. Um, and also, just a reminder to everybody, the senior citizens advisor, advisory committee of the town of Riverhead welcomes your participation in a five-question survey. Your responses to this questionnaire will be used as a needs assessment in the areas of cultural programming, education, educational event planning, recreational activities, and volunteer opportunities in our community. The survey can be found at River, at town locations and on our website, and you can drop it off here at town hall or mail it in. Um, I strongly encourage, and senior citizens is over fifty-five?
Over fifty-five.
Over fifty-five, so my apologies to everybody on that.
I have filled one out.
Um, but we encourage you to fill it out. It's really helpful. The senior, senior advisory committee has worked very hard on that. Um, and they would really, uh, appreciate you taking that survey. So, Jim, do you wanna talk about your cleanup first?
Yeah, the Earth Day cleanup for Riverhead Town, it's our annual spring cleanup, is May fourth. It's a Saturday morning. We're meeting here around eight o'clock, but you can get here at nine if you'd like to sleep in on Saturdays. But, uh, we're gonna have, uh, snacks and water and, and juice and stuff here for you along with, uh, some bags and gloves and garbage picker-uppers and, and we're gonna have targeted areas that we're gonna go out as a team and clean. So get together with some friends, neighbors, civic groups, whatever you belong to, come on out and, and we'll give you an area to clean unless you have an area in your head that you think needs addressing, you can certainly do that on your own. Um, it just lets us know where that is, but we meet here and then we go out for a few hours and we clean on Saturday morning and we try to beautify our town, so. It's a great event, and last year, uh, it was Catherine, Laura, and I, and one other person, and we did a great job.
We cleaned up a lot.
We cleaned up, uh, all of Popeye's property, but, um, this year's gonna be much bigger, much, it was rainy last year. This year, there is a rainy date the following week on the eleventh, but it's gonna be a beautiful day Saturday. I've already checked with the man upstairs.
What is Karen's extension?
Two, five, three.
So, seven, two, seven, two, seven, thirty-two hundred, and then two, five, three?
Two, five, three, it's her extension. If you go on the town website, um, there is a link to Eventbrite if you wanna sign up. We have about, uh, twenty people already signed up through Eventbrite, but, or, that's what's called Eventbrite. So, I mean, there is a link to it through our, through our webpage as well.
I hope, I hope a lot of people come. I know I did bring.
I reached out to the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts yesterday.
There you go. I did bring it up at the, um, our newly formed environmental committee.
Yes, I had two of them come to the meeting last Saturday. They were very, very happy.
And they were very excited. I think one of them, I think it was Sharon Donegan, maybe.
That's right.
Has been going door to door in her neighborhood, trying to get people to join in.
She's, yes, she's quite a spitfire.
Yeah, it's a great committee. But I'd like to comment on the forum.
Sure.
Um, I went last Saturday to the Jamesport Civic Association, um, to meet with them and they, there were about sixty people there that did wanna talk about the, um, the beach, the plan to have music and alcohol at the Jamesport Beach. Uh, Ray Coyne, our executive director of recreation, came as well. I'd say of the sixty, you know, sixty-some-odd people, there was one person that was in favor of it. Um, the people from Jamesport spoke very passionately that they have concerns about, you know, alcohol-infused things. Once you bring alcohol into a situation, um, there is always a concern that the beaches, the beach is close to residential, so they don't like the idea of the music as well. I think our beaches tend to be very family-oriented things. So they have some strong concerns, uh, that we really listen to. I'm thinking, well, even when it was brought up, I mean, in, in, it's kind of a cool idea, but I thought from the beginning it wasn't going to work at any of our beaches. I don't think it, I don't think any of the communities are really going to want it at their beaches in Riverhead. I think that we ought to probably still move forward with the forum so that people all feel they have a chance to speak. Also, at this event on Saturday, a lot of people started putting out ideas of things that they do want at their beaches. And I thought, well, this might be a good opportunity for them to speak to the town board and tell the town board what they would like to see at their beaches. And I've also been thinking about it. It might be a cool idea to have some sort of summer concert series at someplace in town that works for us, a place that's not right by residential. Uh, we have lots of areas, even Branchville Park or somewhere, that we could perhaps work with the businesses in town.
Summer concert series, that's a novel idea.
Yes, I know that you have the, I know that you have yours, but, um.
Am I doing it?
It might be, you know, it might be something that we wanna discuss. I'd like to hear from the community on that and the, um, restaurants and business people in town as to, you know, their thoughts on it and move forward from there. I don't think that the, um, thing at Jamesport is going to be something that the community wants.
Well, you're, you're right. Maybe, you're right. I, I, I don't know. I know that beaches are owned by all the taxpayers of town of Riverhead. But I'll tell you this, I, I think the alcohol was a second thought of it. The whole idea was to get that concession stand up and running and serving something more than a frozen hot dog. So it was good hamburgers and a real concession stand like most, that was the whole epitome of trying to get a restaurant in there. The alcohol, as far as wine and beer, not the Scotch that I like, but the beer and wine was an afterthought. Like, maybe we can make it even better where people can come and listen to a, an acoustical guitar player, not a rock band like Led Zeppelin can't come 'cause they're not together anymore. Um, and a little music on the patio while you're having a glass of wine and a burger. But I, I don't think that the town was ever married to alcohol anymore. It was just an idea that was thrown out. Even Ray said, look, it's an afterthought. So, the whole idea is to get the concession stand up and running, and that, that has to happen.
And that point, that is one of the main points that came up. People said, "Well, we would like to see the concession stand get.
Well, that's, well, me too.
And so that's why I thought perhaps we, since we already advertised, we said we're having the forum and some people still may feel like they wanna speak.
Some people wanna talk, I'm sure, I get it.
People would like to speak and we may, perhaps people could bring ideas of what they do want. But I did try to stress to them, especially since.
I got plenty of styrofoam cups that looked like coffee cups, by the way.
You can't have styrofoam anymore.
Put a top on it.
You know, people originally seemed a little upset with Ray, but I'm, I do think that Ray put the whole idea forward and, and Tim because people thought, you know, we would help the town. The town wasn't looking to make money on this.
Oh, we were requesting, we're trying to get a.
This by members of the East Creek Marina and members that use, I mean, uh, residents that use South Jamesport Beach. So that's where it came from. It started out with the concession stand, like, like Jim said. And that was the whole idea, to get the concession stand up and running. And then we thought, okay, if we can do that, then maybe we can entice the concession stand to be a little more popular and a little more profitable for somebody who's gonna take that over and run it, 'cause the town's not running that. Uh, in order to do that, if we had people come back on Friday nights and Saturday nights and had some, some music and a glass of wine.
And it's limited to.
The concession stand and would help somebody come in to do the concession stand. It needs, I've heard, as much as a hundred thousand dollars in improvements to make it, Department of Health satisfied for a full-serving, food-serving station.
Exactly right.
Um, so, in order to do that, you wanted to entice it to somebody to make it profitable, that they could come in and do that. I don't know if that's gonna happen now without the, the music going on on the weekends, but so be it. We'll put it out and see what it comes to.
You want a restaurant to come in and do the necessary fifty or sixty or seventy thousand dollars worth of improvements and you wanna give them a five-year, seven-year, whatever, we negotiate with them a contract.
Exactly. That's where this whole thing came from.
Right, and you know on any days, there's nobody at the beach.
But I will say that of, like Catherine said, there were sixty people there and only one person was for it. Very similar in the emails, phone calls, and texts that I got.
Well, those in favor are right.
Ninety-nine percent were, were against it. Some of the reasons they used were suspect at best, uh, but I get it. And, and honestly, you have to look at this, in my back door, do I want this? Do I want the public coming, you know, and that's how I kinda have to approach this. Um, and I respect the, the homeowner's rights, the residents down in the area, that they don't want it. So the plug really has been pulled on it, so I'm, I'm not really seeing the need to continue with a forum on the thirtieth when the plug's pulled. This isn't happening. So you're kind of wasting people's time to come out and talk about it when it's a null and void issue. It's not gonna happen.
Yeah, and that's something we have to discuss. I mean, when they asked me about it on Saturday, I said, "Well, I'd like to talk to my fellow board members."
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, which I'm doing now. I mean, my feeling is that if this is not gonna work, this, the community down there does not want this.
That's fine.
And honestly, from the beginning, I didn't think people were going to like it.
And I live near the water and I don't, you know, I agree. I don't know that I would want it either, so.
But I think from the.
I was never pushing for that, but we, we, I think it's, but I do think we need to hear from the community about what they do want.
Fairness, it, it, it was a pilot at best.
Right.
And it was something that could've been pulled out an hour after it started.
Right.
So, I mean, it.
I think, I think one of the other, one of the other issues that, that I think is, is the food truck issue. I think that was also one of the, the issues starting out was whether the, somebody was gonna take over the concession stand, whether we were gonna allow intermittent food trucks during the day to, to sell the food. And I don't know, uh, where we are on that and how the community feels about, about that.
Stand isn't capable of being up and running to serve hot food. That's why the trucks were filling the void until we could get somebody in there to set up the concession stand and take it over.
The town might have to bite the bullet and do this or improvements.
Ray had brought up quite, brought up last year and this year about, about because a concession stand isn't there and because food trucks, trucks are something that, that people tend to like to buy food from. Could we supplement the concession stand with food trucks to, you know, for, for a couple of years to see if that's what the community wants? And I don't know whether the community would want that there or not. Not in the evening, but during the day, uh, for, for the beach, for the beachgoers.
That's what we do now.
We don't, we, no, regular food trucks that would park there. It's an ice cream truck that'll go through there. I think they can't stay more than a few minutes. It's just a, a quick pass-through as opposed to.
We put out the RFP for the beaches. We put all of our beaches on there, right, for the vendors to come in and bid for the food trucks to come? Jim, am I wrong?
No, you're right.
But it was the, more the ice cream trucks. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't for a certain number of hours to come.
I oppose the food trucks. I don't think anybody goes to a beach would be opposed to a food truck. I don't think.
Well, I think that, I think that we, we, that this was a discussion, I think we.
Private beach, it's a public beach.
We put it out for the April thirtieth meeting at, at, at six thirty. I think while we have had a lot of feedback on it, I think that we've set this as a, as a public meeting. The Jamesport Civic was not set as a meeting by, by the town board to discuss this. I think that, that we should, should continue to have this. I think it is an opportunity to hear from the community on this. Um, so.
Well, have fun.
Yeah, I agree. I, I agree to cancel it. It's a moot point. It's not happening. Why waste people's time?
Yep.
If people have an interest of what they want to do at their beaches, they certainly can email us and text us when they certainly found out that there might be alcohol and, and food at the beach. They had no problem doing it and we listened to it, so. I don't see wasting people's time for this.
Me either.
Right, this wasn't the town push. This was a, we put a feeler out there and.
Yep, I, I, I spoke with a lot of the people and they are vehemently against it and they live right on the road that goes to the beach. And I, I agree with Catherine. I wouldn't want that in, you know, going down to my house either and seeing all these cars coming in and out, so.
Understood.
Uh, I, I think just cancel the meeting.
Honestly, I can hear, I can hear the activity in my yard.
Me too.
Bating Hollow Winery.
I'll be there Saturday.
Coop Ridge, I can hear.
I'll look for you on Saturday.
But I think that we've announ, that, that we've announced this as their opportunity to speak. So somebody that has held off speaking because they know that this community forum will be there, I think that, that, that we should hold it so that they could come to.
That's not happening. I, it makes no sense to me.
Me either. I think we should cancel it.
Alright, well, that's, it is what it is. It's an opportunity to meet.
What do you wanna do, Jim? Keep it or no?
I think you're gonna get a lot of angry people that are coming out that are like, "Why are you doing this? We already decided we're not doing it."
Denise is very good. I guarantee you probably all local.
I think people understand that we're not.
If, if, if the public already knows that we're not putting alcohol, we're not even considering putting alcohol at the South Jamesport Beach, they're not gonna go. Why would they go?
And vans.
Just to talk.
Right, they're not gonna come out to a meeting.
They'd rather sit off, but that, if you wanna.
If we have the meeting, they might think that there's still a chance that it's coming instead of just canceling the meeting.
You know, if we wanna.
If we wanna, if we, so this is.
We wanna make a decision that we're pulling the plug on it.
Right, then that's a different story. Are we making a decision that we're pulling the plug on this completely? There'll be no changes at all there? There'll be no food trucks, no alcohol?
The idea was have a public forum on the thought of putting it there, but now, now we're having a forum on the thought of not putting it.
Well, I don't think we ever had the public for, forum. When did we ever hear from the public? When was there ever a public meeting about this?
My phone was blowing up for a month.
And my emails, yes.
Holy smokes.
But you don't think that there's people that, that would like to come out and speak to this since this is the, this is the forum that we had put out for them to speak at?
No.
Not when it's canceled. Makes no sense.
They were coming out to speak to get the result they got.
Unless we have a forum for discussion of, you know.
You know how you have a toothache and then you, you always make a dentist appointment and then you have a toothache and then, you know, the day before the dentist, all of a sudden your tooth feels better, so you cancel your appointment.
Yep. So the majority would like to cancel this?
Tooth is gonna start hurting again a week later.
Well.
Yep.
Yes, you can use that analogy.
I mean, I'm okay with canceling it. I don't think we should be pushing this forward. I don't think the community wants it. I had only thought, once you announce you're having a forum, people might have planned that they had certain things they wanna say or they might wanna discuss what they do want at the beaches. I thought it wasn't a bad idea. It's never a bad idea to hear from the public. But I, I think we should.
Public has no.
Pull the plug on this. I don't think the community wants it.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so we will cancel, we are canceling the forum for April thirtieth.
Yep.
Okay.
If people want to make comments, they could still email us.
And they have.
They can still send letters to the town clerk or call us and talk to us about it.
What color brick would we like on the side of the building where we're gonna hold the meeting?
I think we need a food truck outside town hall for Jim.
No, we need, more than, more than a food truck.
Alright, so, we'll move on to the, the, anybody have town board committee liaison reports or updates?
Um, not really. I know the anti-litter is up and, and moving and, and with this whole environmental group, we got a couple of extra people that slid over to that committee. Um, we've challenged the middle school to come up with a catchy slogan, um, which we're hoping that we'll be able to give out an award on the fourth for that. Um, we got a gift card to give to the winner of that. And then we're gonna use that in our literature. And we're gonna, we're gonna start grabbing some of this recycling money and maybe get some signs and pepper the whole town with this particular slogan as well as litter signs and fine signs. There are some out there, they're probably not as prevalent, but it'd be nice to see more, you know, awareness. So we're working on awareness more than anything, so we're hoping to get this slogan and then we're gonna go out and, and do what we can to get people. Maybe look at where the garbage receptacles are. Do we need more? Do we need recycling or something? Maybe, but blue, blue pails out. I don't know, lots of things. It's a good committee and they, they, they're.
Enthusiastic.
They're full of ideas.
Okay, alright, very good.
Well, the downtown committee has zeroed into some recommendations that we'll be putting forth in the very near future. And we're going to be coming in and talking about those on May thirtieth.
Okay.
Anybody else?
The business advisory committee met for the first time and, uh, they are coming forth with recommendations. I think we're meeting again next week. And then they'll be coming forth with many recommendations as to how to better communicate with the town board when it comes to concerns of businesses in town.
Tell them to check with Jamesport Civic. Works.
And then, Jody, I just had a couple of questions. We had, you had sent out a letter the other day about, uh, consolidated grant funding possibly. I know that we had the North Fork, uh, Task Force for Traffic, that Southhold has had a task force with traffic. We have, we met in November with some suggestions. I know that Bill Ruland from Southhold has reached out about possibly doing consolidated funding for a study for traffic on the East End.
Mm-hmm.
Um, did you, I know you had sent out to talk to different towns about that. Did you want to review that with the board prior to meeting with other towns to consolidate for a possible grant?
Not prior to, 'cause if the, if the, it's actually Southhold Town and Riverhead that is looking to get some ideas from local business owners and to put together a nice package for the grant application, which is due in July. And once, if we decide that we're gonna do that and Southhold and Riverhead are gonna come together and we're gonna move forward with the consolidated, uh, grant application, then I would bring it to the town board. But as liaison to East End Transportation Council for the last nine years, we have been working on these issues continuously. And, you know, it's been proven very effective, like with the, um, the Gulf helped me out in, in Southampton last year.
Oh, how would he open?
The US Open, and so we're going to reach out to that traffic analysis to see if, get proposals from different companies as to what they would do to evaluate how to better move people and traffic on the North Fork and get some proposals from them, see how much it's gonna cost, see if Southhold wants to come with that, win with us, see what the match would be. And then I will present that all to the board, once I have all that information.
And the board's okay with possibly doing a grant with, with a different town for a study for traffic? Okay, moving forward? I think it's a good idea. Alright, very good. Thank you. Um, Jeff Murphy for the.
I'm gonna buy a bus, so, uh, next year when I'm out of office.
Comprehensive plan?
I'm sure we'll be.
We're gonna do train station upgrades really quickly.
Okay. Yep, okay, let's do the train station up.
Train station upgrades, Rosini Zaleski, Zigorel, Zig Zagorelli, and, uh, Murphy.
So this is part.
We're paying for these upgrades to the MTA property?
There's no, no decision made on anything yet. This is just the beginning of a conversation. I know for the past several years, um, it was part of the town board's, uh, desire to move the bus stop away from the, uh, in front of the train station. Um, and that, that was worked on several years ago. Uh, it was not been, was not able to be done because when the, uh, bus had to go around, um, to stop at a different area, it cost about, uh, twenty thousand dollars a year for the change in the bus station. So what we did was we reached out to, uh, MTA, um, where, as we were upgrading and doing the planting over there to see if there was any desire for them to be able to, to allow the bus stop to be further west of their train station because they own all of the, uh, parking spots there and would they be able, would they be willing to, uh, switch with the, with the town to provide those parking spots? Also, it would be a coordination with the, uh, Suffolk County Bus, um, to be able to move the bus stop and to assist in, uh, helping with the finance of everything. And the other, uh, reason for it was that we would really love to see, uh, the train station, uh, come to some purposeful use there. And one of the things that we were hearing, uh, 'cause the MTA had put out an RFP, one of the things we were hearing with that was that the, it was unsafe as the buses were turning there because there would be one bus stopping in front of the train station to pick people up while there was another train, a bus coming through and it was blo, blocking the road, road across. So if you were to have a business there, um, it would possibly interfere with somebody wanting to rent that out. So, all of those things in, in place. Um, we've been coming up with some sort of conceptual plans to see if it would work, So all of those things in, in place, um, we've been coming up with some sort of conceptual plans to see if it would work, to see if, if the MTA would be agreeable, see if Suffolk County Bus would be agreeable. Um, we've gotten some movement on it, so we wanted to come to the board to present, to see if it's something that you would be inclined to support. Um, and what this would be is where we have west of the train station. The, there would be a bump out of the curbing, a, a decrease of the curbing on the west side there, so that the buses could then come down, uh, Railroad Avenue and then pull in. Pull in here for two bus stops, there would, there would be two bus shelters there that people could wait at. It's also in the hopes of, of being able to make this more of a transit oriented hub here for the community as we develop. Um, so that would happen and in return, what we would do is on the, on the, um. South side of the street, we'd put head in diagonal parking there, that would be able, that would be unrestricted. Um, so that, so that the spots that were replaced on that side could be available on the other side, while the train station would continue to keep their handicap parking over there.
Well, I, I, I like, I mean, I like the concept, I, I remember back in, in nineteen eighty-three when they ruined all of this, because I was a part-time contractor and I had to sit there and watch it. They redid all of this particular road to make it a transportation hub, it never went nowhere, but it was fun to watch them work. But, um, this, I like the idea, the only thing is with this angled parking, I, I think you really have to look at, um. What's that cross street that's? Cedar?
Cedar.
Cedar's going to be a two-way street.
Cedar is a two-way street.
Is it two-way now, it used to be one-way?
It's two-way, we had, we had looked at putting the, possibly moving the bu, have the bus stop there, but apparently the road isn't wide enough to do that when they're coming around, when they're coming around.
It used to be one-way, they must have made it.
Yeah, so, um, so that wasn't an option, because if that was an option, that would really be.
A lot easier.
The, the best choice.
A lot less expensive.
And a lot less.
I just can't believe you can do this whole thing for twenty-five grand, I don't know about that.
Well, and then the also with this, you know, this is, uh, Suffolk County, um, was the one who did the paving over here and the cobblestone over here. So we would reach out to them to support this financially, um, if it's something that the board would want to go, go forward with. Um, it really is contingent on having the funds to do it, who would actually be paying for it, but this is the concept and I, you know, just wanted to see, get feedback on that before too much else happens.
I'm in favor of the concept, I just want to know more about where the funds are coming from to do it.
Right, and what the end expectation of doing this will be, so do we expect that more trains are going to come, more buses are going to come, or people are going to be visiting the train station and traveling by bus? Like what are the expectations of the expenditure?
Well, fir, first and foremost, safety, right, because right now it is unsafe the way the, the way the buses, you know.
Parking roadway, basically.
Yeah, parking the roadway and people come in and out, come, come in and out there, so first and foremost, we have, we have safety. And, and yes, I mean, that is the whole, the whole concept of downtown revitalization.
These people are revitalization too.
What?
It gets, it gets people from congregating around the building, it'll get more enticement to maybe put something meaningful in that building without having people.
Yeah, it'll get to people. Right. Right, so it's, you, and, and it certainly is to make the, the area as far as a transportation hub certainly more, um, the flow easier. So, so that, that is the other, the other aspect of it, and yes, I mean, I, the goal of any downtown revitalization is, is that you, people use alternative means of transportation. That they do use the train, they do use the buses, uh, they do walk more, um, and that's, you know.
Well, that's the only thing, they're going to have, if they do take the train out, they're going to get dropped off over here.
Walk a little, which is good for wellness.
And that's where we'll put signs, all the things to come visit for downtown, I mean, really, you can have, you can have that kind of information there, which would be helpful.
I think we can all agree that the train station area is, we need to put attention in.
Sure.
Into the train station area, it's an area of concern, it's also key to our downtown revitalization. And I also think at any opportunity we get, we should be advocating to get more trains out here.
Absolutely.
I have to.
Well, we just.
We've been advocating.
So, I, that's a bad attitude, come on. The only concern that I have also is that I think that the intersection of Osborne and Court should be looked at, because the buses are cutting the corner short and the curb is all broken up and. Water puddles there and it sometimes freezes in the winter, so it could become, uh.
Where's this?
On the corner, you know, right here, where they turn onto Court.
Osborne.
Osborne and Railroad.
Those are highway trucks that do that.
What's that?
I know that it's been a bone of contention of the highway departments for a very long time, is that the buses are coming out here and then they're cutting the corner short.
Yeah.
And then water puddles there and in the winter it freezes and people are walking across the street to get to the historical society, so I think if we're going to do something here.
Nice job.
Or we need to figure out which way the buses are going, so if the buses are coming in here and then they're leaving and they're coming.
The buses, the bus route, the bus route's not changing at all, it's just the stop.
Yeah, so then we should do something with that corner.
The but, the route, the route's the exact, the route's the exact same, this, this corner here will be shortened, but you're talking about down here.
Yep.
By the MRI building.
Yeah.
Yep. So I just concern, I'm just concerned about the puddling and the freezing in the winter because.
Okay.
People do slide through that intersection, because it, all the water just settles there.
But they're coming to paint, they've been saying, MTA's been saying they were going to paint.
Oh, where that big hump is?
No word yet.
For, they're slower than us, how's that? It always, the work orders are in for it, but, but they're slower, they're slower than us.
Well, if anyone hasn't gone by there, though, the.
Tulips are in bloom now.
The bulbs were just beautiful there and, um, we have been, you know, we've been putting some good work into here and I think we need to keep rolling along.
And the next cleanup day for the train station is what? June first, so the next cleanup for the train station area again. All right, so does anybody, I guess, want to take a look at this for a little while, send some comments over, is it okay?
We want to give our own chance.
Do you have any questions?
I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Very nice job. Did it all by yourself?
No, it is, it's usually, takes away parking spaces, but gives us some back on the other side by going with the, uh, angled parking.
Good job.
Did it all by yourself?
And my concern is just the money, that's all, I, I think this is great.
Yep, I would like some money from them too.
Well, I think before we have discussions with who's going to pay for everything, we just needed to make sure that, that it was a viable plan.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, and since.
Well, I think the core center's not as high as I thought it would be.
No.
It's just basically sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, it's not as high as I thought it would be.
It's got Ernesto's discount on it.
I need a Topo Mac.
Good job, thank you Ernesto.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ernesto.
Thanks for your work.
And I have to thank May also, she's done a tremendous amount of work on, on trying to coordinate this and, um, just being able to get the discussions to this point with, with MTA and, and the, uh. Bus, Suffolk County Bus to even have conversations.
Actually, Riverhead Local has a beautiful photograph on there of the train station, who took that, Denise, who took that pic, you did?
Of the daffodils? Very nice job.
Took a half an hour to get up the stairs.
Can we go back to town board committee liaison updates, because I, I forgot to mention something, in, um, that the Landmarks Preservation Commission has been encouraging people with historic structures to deem their properties landmarks. And the plaques cost about five hundred dollars each for the, um, designation that goes on the front of the building that says it's a landmark and when the building was built. And there's two structures right now that are in need of the plaques and they're about five hundred dollars each, so if we could find a thousand dollars somewhere to, um, get these two plaques, that would be great.
I think the plaques are a good idea, I, Joe Petrosalia talked to me about that, I think it's a good idea and I think, you know, when people do such a beautiful job as those two buildings and we should honor them.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
If we can find the money.
Yep.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
So, and, uh, Landmarks is coming in for their annual update, I think, next week, next week.
Okay.
They'll fill us in on all the ones that are currently in the works of Landmarks and which ones are finished and need plaques, but if you can think about that for now, as to where we can pull a thousand dollars from for those plaques, that would be great.
Okay.
I think I'm going to go in the plaque making business.
You can offer that to Jim. They're like the bronze.
Another job for him.
The bronze plaques.
Next we have the com plan, RFP.
Thank you, Jefferson.
I'll be short, um, up here before you two weeks ago, um, we're trying to solicit comments for what to include in the RFP for the comprehensive plan update. I gave you a memo dated April third, um, oh, I saw that. And the promise was is that by next week I would consolidate all the comments and give you a report back. Like to hear from all of you, if you'd like to meet with me, be happy to. Won't be here tomorrow, but I'll be here all next week, so if you'd like to sit down with me next week, I'll be, I'm here.
I would like that, I would like to sit down and talk with you about it.
Yes, I, I was going to say, I, I do have a lot, I, I didn't have a ten, put a, pen to paper yet, though.
That's fine, if we, even if we just meet together.
Conversation is fine, yeah, just to make sure.
Yeah, and I'll write down. Yep.
Route fifty-eight.
Yeah, Route fifty-eight.
Yep.
And then also the sending areas and receiving areas for the TDRs is most important.
Two paragraphs to me.
Yep.
Um, the other comment, the other thing is we had spoken, you had mentioned about having the gentleman who did the original content.
Yep, Josh Shapiro, yep.
Come in and just give us sort of a, like.
He gave me some weak excuse about one relative was in Costa Rica, another one's in Sweden, another one's in Germany and he's trying to coordinate Riverhead within that equation. Okay.
All right, but I think it would be informative to have, have, have somebody just to hear some historical, you know.
Seven, seven-story apartment buildings on Main Street, if you talk about it. With, with single-family housing on Route fifty-eight, there you go.
All right.
There's some buggies, can we bring back the posts?
Yeah.
And the troughs?
All right.
If anybody wants to copy the April third memo again, I can send it to you again.
Yeah, you've passed it out, but I don't think it, I haven't had it by email.
Just send it out again.
That's fine.
And you reached out to, uh, to planning board, zoning board?
Planning board, yep. Yep.
All right.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
And you guys did Landmarks Preservation, Architectural Review Board, Environmental Committee, you know what, if you send it, send it, send it to, send it to my office and then I will just have my office send it out to the committee members.
Okay.
Karen, Karen, continue.
Yeah.
Might as well, we, we have that litter too, make sure we got enough coverage pills.
All right, very good.
Contact us about garbage.
All right, um, I think that's everything, so can I have a first and second to go in executive session, matter surrounding the hiring of two employees, matters surrounding a raise for an employee, matters, uh, matters surrounding movement of personnel. And, uh, litigation, current litigation in the matter of Oak Hills Association versus Woodson.
Remove.
Maybe go into executive.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, so Carrie.